Regular meeting number seven will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem. Councilmember Reemy, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening in recognition of Black History Month, this council has asked for McKenna Hensley to come and sing, lead us in the singing of the Black National Anthem, followed by Pastor Dale Tucker, who will bring our prayer and give words on the significance of this, the month. Ms. McKenna, welcome.
Lift every voice and sing till earth and heaven ring, ring with the harmonies of liberty. Let our rejoicing rise high as the leaping skies. Let it resound loud as the rolling sea. Sing a song full of the faith that the dark past has taught us. Sing a song full of the hope that the present has brought us. Facing the rising sun of our new day begun, let us march on till victory is won. Stony the road we trod, bitter the chastening rod, felt in the days when hope unborn had died, yet with a steady beat have not a weary feet come to the place for which our father sied. We have come over a way that with tears have been watered. We have come treading our path through the blood of the slaughter. Facing the rising sun of our new day begun, let us march on till victory is won. God of our worries, God of our silent tears, Thou who hast brought us thus far on the way, Thou who hast by Thy might led us into the light, keep us forever in the path we pray. Lest our feet stray from the places our God where we met Thee, lest our hearts drunk with the wine of the world we forget Thee. Shadowed beneath Thy hand may we forever stand true to our God, true to our native land. Thank you.
McKenna is a junior, McKenna Hensley is a junior at Fort Hayes High School, one of the best that, a senior? A senior, I apologize, one of the best that Columbus City has and really why we are celebrating this. Welcome Pastor Tucker.
Let us bow our heads and pray. Heavenly Father, we are certainly grateful for this day and for what this day has given unto us. We come now as humble servants for Your glory and for the betterment of Your people. God, I ask for a special blessing upon all those that lead and govern, especially those among our city council. I pray that all that we do and say will be glorious and acceptable in Thy sight. Allow our thoughts to be given according to Your wisdom and our decisions be made through Your knowledge. In the Master's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
To President Harden, to city council, and to the great citizens of the city of Columbus, I thank God for this opportunity and appreciate the opportunity, the invitation to come and share on our thoughts and the importance of Black history. During the month of February, we honor the contributions of African-Americans in these United States. Our history in America began in the colonial days. However, much was lost up until the 20th century when a push, not only to document, but to share with the public, the history and the impact of African-Americans in America. This effort was championed by a scholar by the name of Dr. Carter G. Woodson. Dr. Woodson himself escapes poverty by way of education and later received his doctoral degree from Harvard University. It was during his studies that he noticed that the African-American was not included in the curriculum of academia, or if it was, it was grossly incorrect in its presentation of the Black in America. It is through the efforts of Dr. Woodson that the Association for the Study of Negro Life was founded in 1915. Within the year, he published his first publication in the Journal of Negro History, now known as the Journal of African-American History, highlighting the achievements and the successes of Blacks that otherwise would have gone unnoticed. And it is here that the African-Americans literally wrote themselves back into American history. Not only did the journal provide news and information, but also became an agent for change. Soon thereafter, Woodson organized the first annual National Negro History Week in 1926 in the second week of February. After some time, Blacks in America began to embrace their heritage. And not long after the death of Dr. Woodson, the National Negro History Week became known as Black History Month. It was Dr. Woodson's pursuit of education that lifted him above his circumstances to a platform to educate others surrounding him to impact the legacy of Black America. One man, because of his desire to change his life, was informed and empowered those around him to change the lives of many, in which we honor that great opportunity today. One man took what he was offered and offered to those around him to bring light to those that made a difference. One man that was afforded an opportunity reached back in the past to bring our history to the present, and in the same effort paid forward by the way of his investment into the lives that will come after him. It is in that same spirit of Dr. Carter G. Woodson that I challenge and encourage those that are in this room today. How will we use the platforms we've been afforded to inform and to empower little boys and girls of every race about the impact of African-Americans, not just in the past, but of Black lives that make a difference even today? Who among us will continue to educate the world on the contributions of Blacks in America? Who among us will lift up every voice and sing till heaven and earth ring? Who among us will sing a song full of the faith that our dark past has taught us? Who among us will sing a song full of hope that present, that is present, that brought us to where we are today? Who will be true to our God? Who will be true to ourselves? And who will be true to our native land? I'm not going to hold you much longer, but there's a creed that our school recites each and every morning before we start our day. That creed makes the declaration that today I will act in wisdom, cooperation, and faith. I will learn from the lessons I learned on yesterday to prepare for tomorrow. I will strive to do the amazing, the unusual, and the uncommon. And each and every morning that our young people recite that creed, I wonder how better the world would be if we acted with wisdom, cooperation, and faith. Each and every day that our children make that declaration, I wonder how much further the world would be if we carried our lessons learned from yesterday, implement them today to prepare for tomorrow. I wonder who among us will leave an imprint on the lives around us? If we made an effort to strive not for the status quo? If we made an effort not to live an average life? But how many of us will press towards the mark of a higher calling? It's in that higher calling that you'll find the determination to do the unusual. It's in the high calling that you will produce the uncommon. If we would be honest today, it's our Black history that has served as a lifeline in the history of America. It is our Black history that has produced the most innovative of thinkers and change agents that the world has ever seen. It is our Black history that has left an impact and continues to blaze the trail for our households, our communities, our schools, our government, and the world abroad. It is our Black history that has taught us the value of not just allowing life to happen, but making choices that will continue to impact our world today and the world to come. As I take my seat, I charge each and every one of us not to allow Black history to just become a month of reflection and count the days as they go by, but let us stand on the shoulders of those that came before us, that sacrificed for us, and make each day count. Thank you again for the opportunity, and God bless you all.
Thank you, thank you Pastor Tucker. And Pastor Tucker is a senior pastor at Tristone Baptist. I also see First Lady as well, and also need to recognize Ms. Bessie, who is back in the house. Ms. Bessie was a longtime employee of the city of Columbus, working in the clerk's office, and we love you and thank you for coming and being a part of the family this evening. With that, clerk, call the row, please.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Reemy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Any person who takes any action to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespassing pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21. Can I get a motion dispensed with a reading of the journal? Clerk, call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Reemy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. This week's communication received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city's bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
None at this time.
Are there any resolutions by members of council? Councilmember Elizabeth Brown? Councilmember Mitch Brown? Councilmember Reemy? Councilmember Paige?
Thank you, President Harden. This evening I do have Resolution 002X-2018, and I would like to call County Treasurer Brooke Sullivan up to the podium. This evening's resolution is to commemorate Treasurer Brooke Sullivan on her unprecedented achievement of becoming the first African-American Franklin County Treasurer. In November of 2017, Cheryl Brooke Sullivan became the first ever African-American to be elected as a Franklin County Treasurer. And Treasurer Brooke Sullivan was born in Columbus, attended high school at Eastmore Marion Franklin, and college at Ohio State and Franklin University. Treasurer Brooke Sullivan is not only an avid volunteer and community servant, but also a veteran. And for nearly 40 years, Treasurer Brooke Sullivan has been involved in the management of real estate administration appraisals and the sale of real estate. She is affiliated with several local organizations such as the Ohio Memorial Chapter of the Tuskegee Airmen and the Poindexter Village Historical Preservation. I would first like to move for adoption of this resolution.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Reemy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. The floor is now yours, Treasurer.
Protocol may not be necessary, but I've always wanted to do this. Council President Harden, President Pro Tem Stenziano, members of council and electeds, thank you very much. It is a humble honor, and I truly appreciate the acknowledgement and recognition on behalf of myself, my family, and my staff. Being the first has broad spectrum, at the top of the spectrum, there is acknowledgement, and towards the bottom of the spectrum, there's scrutiny, and I am grateful for all that comes with it. I was blessed to adopt a staff that is knowledgeable, efficient, effective, many of them have been there as far as Richard Cordray, whose footsteps I follow, Ed Leonard, whose footsteps I follow. I was blessed to receive a staff that is ready to take on a new vision and take our office to new levels of excellence. Like yourselves, I'm just grateful for the opportunity to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer. Are there any additional comments from my colleagues? Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you, Councilmember Paige, and to Treasurer Brooke Sullivan, congratulations. I've known you a long time, and just congratulate you in the role that you're in. One, to be the first African-American Treasurer in Franklin County is a significant accomplishment. And I know that you have the skills and the ability, and as you just said, the staff that will help you to be successful in your role. It is, it's a blessing for you to be in this role. I think that it is important, especially for women and girls and girls of color, to be able to see you in this role. And I just wish you the very best and much success in your role as a role model for women, girls, and to, again, show this community the work of a great leader. Congratulations.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Thank you.
Thank you, President Harden. I don't have a resolution, but do have a quick announcement. When we meet with our various departments and our meeting with technology this week, or last week, there was some discussion about what people should be keeping an eye out in terms of scams or phishing opportunities. And being the time of the year where we are preparing our tax documents for the April 17 deadline, wanted to share the concern and remind people to be on the lookout for tax scams, including phone scams, phishing, and tax provider swindles. Help yourself, avoid these rip-offs by knowing what to look for in order to keep your money safe. Remember that the IRS will never initiate contact with taxpayers by email, text messages, or social media channels to request personal or financial information. Never open emails that claim to be from the IRS. The agency does not send emails out of the blue about your taxes or refunds. Never give out your social security number or any financial information to someone who calls or emails you requesting such information. We always recommend reputable tax preparers and websites. I know my colleague Elizabeth Brown and I were at the United Way Central Ohio's Tax Time Program this week and saw wonderful volunteers and a terrific program. For more tips and information on keeping yourself safe, I do encourage you to visit www.irs.gov or call my office, 614-645-8084. That's all I have. Thank you, President Harden.
Thank you. I am going to ask Nana Watson, the president of Columbus NAACP, and I don't know if it's N-WOM, and is Annie coming up? No, just, okay. So Nana Watson, the president of NAACP. And I have a resolution, and the resolution number is 002X-2018, and it is to recognize February as Black History Month in the city of Columbus and celebrate the civil rights contributions of the NAACP and the strides it has made to protect the political, educational, social, and economic rights of all. Whereas Black History Month, which originally started as Negro History Week, is celebrated during the month of February and dates back to 1926, when Dr. Carter G. Woodson set aside a special period to recognize the heritage and achievement of African-Americans. And whereas the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, the NAACP, was founded on February the 12th of 1909 and is universally recognized as the nation's oldest, largest grassroots-based civil rights organization with more than a half a million members and supporters around the world. Whereas the NAACP was formed in response to the horrific lynching that took place during the early 1900s, especially the month-long race riot which occurred in the capital and resting place of President Abraham Lincoln in Springfield, Illinois. During this August through September, a rampage of, the rampage of 1908, Black and Jewish businesses and properties were burned, Black citizens were beaten, lynched, and forced out of their homes into hiding. Whereas the Great Depression of the 1930s influenced the NAACP to begin to focus on economic justice. And whereas the civil rights era was a key time for the NAACP legal defense team, they spearheaded the passage of the Civil Rights Act of 1957, 1964, 1968, the Voting Rights Act of 1965, and they also won a number of key desegregation cases, including the landmark Brown versus Board of Topeka case of 1954, and all the deliberate speed to segregation Brown order of 1955. In Columbus, the local NAACP's advocacy on this issue continued for more than 20 years. The order to desegregate Columbus City Schools was not issued until March the 8th of 1977. However, the district continued to oppose this until the United States Supreme Court upheld Judge Robert Duncan's federal court order in April of 1978, 79, I'm sorry. And whereas the local Columbus NAACP has embraced a six-point game-changing strategic plan to address African-American inequality, which includes economic instability, which is encouraging partnerships between Black businesses and local government, education, adopting schools and tutoring elementary students, health, community conversations on Parkinson's and sickle cell and infant mortality, public safety and criminal justice, supporting body cameras, voting rights and political representation includes registering voters and hosting candidate forms and issuing report cards, expanding youth and young engagement, exploring ways to engage youth. And whereas the NAACP, along with other prominent civil rights advocates such as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Rosa Parks, Frederick Douglass, Dr. E.B. DuBois, Dorothy Height, Ralph Ellison, James Baldwin, Alex Haley, Thurgood Marshall, Jackie Robinson, Sir Jordan of Truth, Harriet Tubman, Phoebe LeHaimer, and countless others have and continue to fight against the cancer of injustice and paving the way for future generations. Now therefore be it resolved by this council of the city of Columbus that this council has hereby recognized the important contributions of the NAACP and applauds its role in the civil rights struggle in America and does hereby declare the month of February of 2018 as Black History Month in the city of Columbus, and I move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Reemy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, President Watson. The floor is yours.
Yes, to Council President Harden and members of council, I bring you greetings from the oldest and the boatest civil rights organization in America. We are extremely humbled and pleased to accept this resolution. To Councilwoman Tyson, a member in good standing of the NAACP, thank you for sponsoring this resolution. We've come a long way, but the road seems longer as we address the issues of social injustices for the voiceless and the faceless people of our community. We encourage you, councilperson, we encourage you to join Councilperson Tyson and our mayor in becoming a member of the oldest civil rights organization in America, and thank you so very much. And the road is going to be so rough for us as we proceed. Thank you so much.
Tonight I have one announcement and one resolution. First, I have Mr. Jaden Edwards with me. He is 10 years old and he attends Patriotic Preparatory Academy, and he, he actually just told me it's Patriot, not Patriotic Academy, so thank you, sir. He's here for two reasons. One, I wanted, several weeks ago, Jaden reached out to my office. He was concerned about the conversations that this community's been having about the spike in crime, and he wanted to do something about it. He wanted to get involved. I wrote him a letter back and said that his leadership is needed more now than ever, and that I wanted to give him a jumpstart on that leadership, and I want him to see what we do and so figure, so he could one day step up in our shoes. And so he is here today, he is shadowing, and I'm so appreciative of him. His grandmother is here, Dr. Patrice Palmer as well, who has done a lot in our community to advance the work of restored citizens and many others. But second, I have Resolution 0029X-2018 to support the Ohio Fairness Act in the effort to change Ohio's anti-discrimination laws to include sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression as protected classes. Ohio's current nondiscrimination protections allow for Ohioans to be evicted and fired simply for being who they are. Now Columbus does offer these protections to our LGBTQ residents, but unfortunately one can lose those protections by crossing city limits on one's way to work. In Columbus, both the public and the private sector understand the need to implement comprehensive nondiscrimination legislation. Many businesses are rallying behind this legislation through the Ohio Business Competes Coalition, which is made up of hundreds of Ohio's top businesses. Recently, Amazon has been under pressure to not locate any, in any state that lacks comprehensive nondiscrimination practices. The Ohio Fairness Act would provide protections to our residents and signal our dedication to inclusion. This legislation is about more than just expanding protections and attracting large employers. It elevates the principles that unite us all, the idea that Ohioans should be treated equally and given the opportunity to pay their bills, work hard, and be judged on their merit and provide for their family. Are there any comments or questions from our colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage. Clerk, call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Reemy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Ordinance adopted. Are there any comments from our elected officials? City Attorney Auditor, I see that we have Mr. Jay McAllister Chair of the Greater Hilltop and Ms. Annie Womack, Near East Area Commission in the House. Thank you so much for being with us. Are there any other requests by members of council for the removal of ordinance or resolution from the Consent Action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may, we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of the 30-day legislation by the city clerk. Clerk Callough-Roe.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Will you now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance Committee, ordinance 233-2018. Judiciary and Court Administration Committee, ordinance 307-2018. Technology Committee, ordinance 247-2018. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 132, 137, 195, 196, 234, and 268-2018. Health and Human Services Committee, ordinance 243-2018. Zoning Committee, ordinance is 322, 367, 296, and 297-2018.
The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent action. Will the clerk now read those ordinances into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 27X-2018 and 25X-2018. Finance Committee, ordinance is 142, 190, 236, and 404-2018. Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance is 90, 154, and 324-2018. Public Safety Committee, ordinance is 150, 151, 221, 224, 295-2018. Public Service and Transportation Committee, Resolution 3X-2018, ordinance 300-2018. Administration Committee, ordinance 250-2018. Economic Development and Small Business Committee, ordinance is 258 and 347-2018. Housing Committee, ordinance is 191, 325, 326, 327, 328, 329, 330, 331, 332, and 333-2018. Judiciary and Court Administration Committee, ordinance is 206, 210, 211, and 386-2018. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 28, 148, 168, 174, 177, and 181-2018. Health and Human Services Committee, ordinance is 213, 215, 259, and 260-2018. Appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0028, 29, 30, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 46, 47, 48, 49, 50, 51, 52, 53, and 54-2018.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have one speaker for a consent agenda. We have Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, welcome back to council. I was concerned last week and I didn't see you. Please state your name and address and the organization you may represent, sir.
1612 Arlington Avenue, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins, the chair of Minnesota Vacant Property. I will be speaking in against. (beep). Oh, Lord, oh, Lord. Nathaniel Wilkins, 1612 Arlington Avenue, the chair of Minnesota Vacant Property. I was speaking in against of this in because several reasons. I know 1502 Briarwood Avenue was an old-style house we had in Linden, but unfortunately it was torn down at the time. I'm going to be against this for two reasons. It's because when I come down here multiple time after time past my street, this houses has side expanses of yards. Let me say that again, side expanses of yards. Now, I understand, given to the adjacent property owner, we want the same amount of money that was given to that vacant land to have more taxes, to tax, to tax home to that owner. Now, I understand, when I moved in my house at 1612 Arlington Avenue, it was a beautiful home with k-cod homes. What I see now is a house, an empty lot, that's close. And while I'm speaking of this, even though this home was torn down, to see something happen with 1502 Briarwood, I want to see a house, not an empty lot adjacent to the property owner. So again, I'm against this, but I would like to have more information from development team. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Director Shawnee, would you please have your teams follow up with Mr. Wilkins for any concern? Again, Mr. Wilkins, we appreciate your advocacy for homes in Linden and throughout the city. Really appreciate it. May I have a motion for approval of these items as needed as consent actions? Clerk Callough-Roe, please.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. We will now proceed with the second reading of 30-day tabled and emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee. Councilmember Elizabeth Brown chairs that committee. The floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in finance, we are starting with ordinance 3008-2017 to make appropriations for the 12 months ending December 31st, 2018, for each of the several object classes for which the city of Columbus has to provide from the monies known to be in the treasury of said city Columbus, in the fund known as the General Fund, during the said 12 months from the collection of all taxes and from other sources of revenue, the amount of $890,584,000 and to declare an emergency. As I discussed last week, the operating budget was first on this council's agenda at the November 20th, 2017 meeting. It was tabled so that council and the public would have the opportunity to review it in detail. Last week, we removed the budget from the table to amend, and tonight we are voting on passage. City Council has held 14 public hearings to review the budget, including a hearing to discuss amendments following their introduction last week. Thank you to all of the citizens who provided feedback to city council throughout this process. This budget reflects the priorities of the community, including a focus on public safety and health, building stronger neighborhoods through revitalization and development, and preparing our city for the future. Thank you to the mayor's office and his staff, as well as department directors and their staffs, for working directly with council through the committees and hearing processes to help explain the impact this budget has on your operations and our residents. I also want to thank Councilmember Tyson for her work on this budget as Finance Chair, as well as our former auditor, Mr. Dorian, our Finance Director, Joe Lombardi, our current auditor, Megan Kilgore, Deputy Director of Finance, Dan Giangardella, Adam Robbins, Aileen Heiser, and her staff. Finally, I'd like to thank Matt Erickson and all council staff who have provided assistance throughout this process. It takes a lot of work to get a budget done, and you do it every year, so thank you to all of you. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Okay. Seeing none, I first move to take from the table.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. I then move for passage as amended.
Second. Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, President Harden. Ordinance 3009-2017 to make appropriations and transfers for the 12 months ending December 31st, 2018, for other funds for various divisions, to authorize the city auditor to make transfers as may be necessary and to declare an emergency. This ordinance covers the operating funds for city department, for city departments other than the general fund. It was amended last week to make what were largely technical corrections before final consideration tonight. So I first, seeing no questions, I first move to take it from the table.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
I next move for passage as amended.
Second. Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, President Harden. These next two ordinances authorize the purchase of a ladder truck and eight ambulances for the Division of Fire. Maintaining the city's fleet of vehicles in top working order is vitally important to ensuring departments like the Division of Fire can continue protecting the public. Avoiding an ambulance or fire truck breaking down in the middle of a run is a top priority. Emergency action is being considered so that the vehicles can be put into service without delay. Vehicle purchases like these generally follow a schedule each year that help us stay out in advance of any repairs needed and that actually help also extend useful life of our vehicles. So I would briefly, to help provide some insight, invite Director Lombardi to discuss maintenance of the city fleet before I read these ordinances.
Thank you, President Harden, Chairperson Brown, members of council. First of all, I'd like to thank our leaders at our Fleet Management Division. I'm a little biased here, but I believe we have some of the best safety vehicles, if not all city vehicles, and if not the state of Ohio, but definitely the country, but I am showing my bias. As it relates to safety apparatus, engines usually are on the street for about 10 years, ladders for about 15 years, rescues about 10 years, and then medics about six years. And we always keep at least two or three of those in reserve in case they're in for getting fixed, or if something would happen, we'd have some reserves that we can use in the forces. And the average life that we have currently out on the street of all those vehicles is about seven and a half years, so fairly young. We get the best technology and the best equipment on those vehicles for, not only for our firefighters, but certainly for the health and safety of our residents.
Great. Thank you, Director Lombardi, for that insight. Are there any questions? All right, moving on to the ordinances. Ordinance 0139-2018 to authorize and direct the Finance and Management Director to issue a purchase order to Finley Fire Equipment Company Incorporated for the purchase of one custom Pierce 107, Pierce 107-foot aerial tiller ladder truck, and the purchase installation of all pertinent equipment to be utilized on the respective vehicle for the Division of Fire from an existing cooperative state-of-Ohio term contract with Pierce Manufacturing, to authorize an expenditure of $1,315,326 from the Safety Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. Seeing no questions from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second. Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Next, ordinance 0152-2018 to amend the 2017 capital improvement budget to authorize the appropriation and transfer of funds within the Safety Bond Fund, to authorize and direct the Finance and Management Director to issue purchase orders to Horton Emergency Vehicles for the purchase of eight new Horton EMS transport vehicles for the Division of Fire, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, Chapter 329, on the purchase of all pertinent equipment and installation required for these vehicles, to authorize the expenditure of $2,363,312 from the Safety Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. Director Lombardi, why is competitive bidding being waived for this ordinance?
Thank you, President Harden, Chairperson Brown, members of council. The waiver is only for the installation of the equipment. It is not for the actual vehicles. These vehicles have been used by the city fire forces since approximately 1973. They're locally manufactured. We have researched if we would competitively bid the installation of all the equipment that goes on these vehicles, that, well, we have found a third party would have to then drop it off at Horton's to install. So we feel it's a, in the best interest of the city, from a turnaround standpoint, to waive competitive bids for the installation of the equipment that goes on those vehicles.
Okay. Thank you, Director Lombardi. Any questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second. Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
And before we move on to Recreation and Parks, I do want to acknowledge the people who make the, this equipment run and who deliver a lot of safety and assurance to our residents, our firefighters, and members of the Public Safety Division. I know that we are joined by Dave Montgomery tonight, who is president of IAFF Local 67, so thank you for being here, sir. I'd like to move now to Recreation and Parks? Thank you. Ordinance 0171-2018 to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into contract with the Columbus Urban League for services related to the implementation of the 2018 Neighborhood Violence Intervention Program, to authorize the expenditure of $329,450 from the Recreation and Parks Operating Fund, 2285, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, and to declare an emergency. The city of Columbus contracts with the Columbus Urban League to administer the Neighborhood Violence Intervention Program on the Near East and South sides. The program is based out of the Barrick and Beatty Recreation Centers. The funds allocated through this ordinance go towards the hiring of at least two full-time case managers and at least eight intervention workers to provide case management work and support services to victims and families impacted by violence. Activities include responding to specific violent confrontations, working to mediate and diffuse conflict tensions, and actively promoting peace-building among youth. The Columbus Urban League also responds to calls related to violence in the community 24 hours, seven days a week. This contract and the services provided are a part of the city's effort to reduce violence in the community while also connecting youth and their families to services and programs focused on education, life skills, character development, and job readiness. Emergency action is being considered so that the services can continue without interruption. Competitive bidding is being waived because the Columbus Urban League has provided these services for five years, and many of the intervention workers have established ongoing relationships with the members of the community. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? See?
Councilmember Brown, or Chair Brown, I just wanted to say how much I support, how much I support this program. It's so important right now, the intervention work that is happening throughout our neighborhoods that folks really don't hear about anymore, or we don't talk much about. I certainly want to appreciate the work of former Chair Page and Director Collins and former Director Knight. When we started this program, this was doing recreation differently, and I appreciate that our department and our city stepped out there to reach people where they are. It is saving lives, and I truly believe that, and I am excited to support this piece of legislation.
Thank you, President Harden. All right, seeing no more questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second. Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Next, we have ordinance 0173-2018 to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into contract with Communities for New Directions, to provide professional and fiscal services related to the implementation of the 2018 Neighborhood Violence Intervention Program, to authorize the expenditure of $329,450 from the Recreation and Parks Operating Fund, 2285, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code and to declare an emergency. The city also contracts with Communities for New Direction to administer the Neighborhood Violence Intervention Project program, excuse me, on the north and west sides of the city. Their programs are based out of the Linden and Glenwood Recreation Centers, and they provide the same staffing and services that I detailed in the previous ordinance. The justification for emergency consideration and the waiving of competitive bidding are also the same as the previous ordinance. I also was remiss in pointing out Councilmember Stenziano is a sponsor on these ordinances. Thank you. Are there any other questions? All right, I move for passage.
Second. Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chair Brown. Next committee we have is Public Service and Transportation Committee. Councilmember Emmanuel Remy is chair.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in Public Service and Transportation Committee, we have ordinance number 145-2018 to authorize the city auditor to appropriate funds within the Polaris TIF Fund within the Federal Transportation Grants Fund, to authorize the city auditor to transfer cash and appropriation between the Polaris TIF Fund and the roadway improvements, LaZelle Road Phase B Fund, to authorize the city auditor to appropriate funds within the roadway improvements, LaZelle Road Phase B Fund, to authorize the city attorney's office and director of public service to execute agreements with Norfolk Southern Corporation and the CSX Transportation Incorporated for railroad right-of-way improvements for the roadway improvements, LaZelle Road Phase B Project, to authorize the director of public service to reimburse railroad right-of-way improvement costs to Norfolk Southern Corporation and CSX Transportation for the project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $5,200,000 from the Polaris Interchange Fund and the Federal Transportation Grants Fund, and to declare an emergency. Before, I asked my colleagues if they have any questions, and so I'd like to ask Director Gallagher to speak on this project.
Sure. President Harden, Chair Remy, for this project and specifically for this legislation, this is allow, to allow us to contract with the railroads so we can perform roadway improvements within their right-of-way. For Phase B, which is what this is for, that is the work between Flint Road and Sankus Boulevard, and that work, along with the work from Phase A, which is High Street to Flint, so basically from High to Sankus, that construction will be starting in 2018, and that work includes reconstruction and widening of that entire section of the roadway along with sidewalks along the south side. We will be constructing a shared use path along the north side of the roadway, and we will be relocating Old State Road at its intersection with LaZelle and installing a roundabout. And then because of that work, the two railroads, CSX and Norfolk Southern, which is simply what this legislation is for, we will be rebuilding both of those. is for, we will be rebuilding both of those railroad bridges. So again, that work will be starting the summer, this summer, and then next year in 2019, we will be starting Phase C, which is basically the same work from Sankus to Worthington-Galena. So several years of work coming. Thank you.
Do any of my colleagues have any questions? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. With your permission, President Harden, I'd like to move to Administration Committee. Tonight in Administration Committee, we have ordinance number 149-2018, to authorize the Director of Human Resources Department to enter into contract with Mount Carmel Health Systems Occupational Health, to provide health and physical fitness testing services and related health programs for the Division of Police and Fire, to authorize the expenditure of $1,140,624 from the General Fund, and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, that's all I have in my committees this evening, President Harden.
The next committee before council is the Judiciary and Court Administration Committee. Councilmember Page, Chair.
Thank you President Harden. This evening in Judiciary and Court Administration, we have ordinance 0223-2018, to authorize and direct the city attorney to settle the case known as Marco Stankovic versus City of Columbus, pending in the Franklin County Court of Common Please. To authorize the city auditor to transfer $100,000 between object classes within the 2018 Storm Sewer Operating Fund budget, and to authorize the expenditure of the sum of $100,000 in settlement of this lawsuit, and to declare an emergency. I would like to ask Mr. Brian Shin, Chief of Claims and Deputy Chief of Staff in the Columbus City Attorney's Office, to provide additional information about this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you President Harden, Chair Page, members of council. On June 23, 2016, Mr. Stankovic was driving his car westbound on Freeway Drive towards Sinclair Road when the road beneath him collapsed. The front end of Mr. Stankovic's car fell into a sinkhole, and he sustained significant injuries as a result of the accident. The city contracted with Prime AE Group to investigate the cause of the accident, and they determined, among other factors, that significant rain had undermined the soil around the culvert and caused the sinkhole to appear. The city is responsible for the maintenance of the culvert and the culvert pipe. There had been repair work planned, but it had not begun yet. The issue of causation is complex in this matter, and there are some questions about ongoing inspection and foreseeability of the accident. If this case were to have proceeded to trial, the city would have had to incur significant expenses with regard to an expert testimony at depositions and at trial. Mr. Stankovic's damages were significant, his injuries were pretty severe, including a back injury, an injury to his head. He will have to undergo future treatment because of these injuries. In addition, Mr. Stankovic will have to pay back a claim from the Bureau of Workers' Compensation who had paid out initially for some of his medical care. We believe that a jury verdict here for the plaintiff would expose the city to a sizable verdict and a significant liability. From the amount of the settlement that's recommended, Mr. Stankovic will have to pay the Bureau of Workers' Compensation and his attorney's fees. Given these factors, we believe that it's in the best interest of the city to settle this claim for $100,000, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you Mr. Shin. Are there any questions? Briefly, did you say that repairs have not begun yet?
At the time of the, at the time of the accident, Chair Page, there were repairs that were slated to be done where the sinkhole appeared, and they had not been started. That contributed to our belief that it's in the best interest to settle this.
Thank you. If there are no further questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, that's all I have, President Harden.
Page. The next committee to come before council is the Public Utilities Committee. President Protem Stenziano is Chair.
Thank you President Harden. Tonight in Public Utilities, bring forward ordinance 0118-2018, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to renew the construction contract with Decker Construction Company for utility cut and restoration services for the Department of Public Utilities, and to authorize the expenditure of $1,330 from the Water Operating Fund, $425,000 from the Sanitary Sewer Operating Fund, and $50,000 from the Electricity Operating Fund. Various types of utility excavations are performed within the City of Columbus's right-of-way by the Department of Public Utilities. The restoration work typically involves repairs of existing pavement, curbs, and sidewalks. The department routinely outsources this restoration work to a contractor that is equipped and trained to make these repairs. This will be the second of two one-year renewals, and will add one year to the term of the contract. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second. Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you President Harden. Last ordinance, 0136-2018, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate universal term contract purchase agreements for the purchase of Centrex and Data Services with AT&amp;T for Division of Power, the Division of Water, and the Division of Sewerage and Drainage, and to authorize the expenditure of $400,000 from the Electricity Operating Fund, $500,000 from the Water Operating Fund, and $310,000 from the Sewer Operating Fund. The Centrex and Data Services being purchased are essential for the Department of Public Utilities Communications. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second. Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
That's all we have in utilities this evening.
President Protem. The next committee we have is Health and Human Services. Councilmember Tyson is Chair.
Thank, excuse me, thank you. Have ordinance number 0121-2018, to authorize the appropriation of $1,35,845 from the unappropriated balance of the General Government Grants Fund to Columbus Public Health for the 2018 HOPE program, and to declare an emergency. The HOPE program provides for individuals who have HIV or AIDS, provides housing information services, resource identification, acquisition, rehabilitation, conversion, lease, and repair facilities to provide housing and, housing and services, new construction of housing units, or tenant-based rental assistance, short-term rent, mortgage, and utility payments, supportive services, and technical assistance and administrative support. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second. Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. The next ordinance is ordinance number 0227 of 2018, to authorize Aborted Health to enter into a contract with OSU Internal Medicine LLC for physician services for the Columbus Public Health Sexual Health Clinic, to authorize the expenditure of $62,400 from the Health Special Revenue Fund, and to pay the cost thereof, and to declare an emergency. Again, this is for the specialized physician services. The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention estimates that nationally, there are approximately 20 million new STD infections each year, 20 million. Half of them among young people ages 15 to 24. Ohio, and particularly Franklin County, rates for syphilis, gonorrhea, and chlamydia are significantly higher than the national rates. The Sexual Health Clinic provides services to over 8,000 patients per year, many of whom are uninsured. However, no one is denied services based on their inability to pay. Patients 13 and older receive testing, counseling, assessment, treatment, and other resources in a nonjudgmental way. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, that's all I have in my committee this evening.
Thank you Chair Tyson. The last committee is Rules and Reference Committee, and I chair this committee, but Councilmember Page has a piece of legislation that she will introduce.
Thank you President Harden, and I am co-sponsoring this ordinance with Councilmember Mitchell Brown, this 0388-2018, to enact new Chapter 599 of the Columbus City Codes, creating provisions for the designation, licensing, and monitoring of clean zones, and to declare an emergency. On January 24, I convened a public hearing to inform the public of the new chapter and list the distinct boundaries with the additional ordinance, in connection with the 2018 NCAA Women's Final Four, which we are excited that our capital city will host this year. A clean zone is a geographically defined boundary for which a special permit is required to lawfully sell or distribute licensed and/or special event-related services or goods during a limited and specific time period. This evening, we have with us Mr. Adam Friedman from the Mayor's Office, who is here to give additional information. Mr. Friedman, you're welcome to come to the podium, and is also available to answer any questions that my colleagues may have.
President Harden, councilmembers, thank you for allowing me to present to you tonight. As the city continues to grow, Columbus will continue to host and attract major licensed special events. These special events will require commercial activities in areas surrounding their respective venues to be monitored during the duration of the events. This code will govern when, where, and how these events should be monitored and enforced, including the procedure for enacting such an area, the licensing procedure, and penalties for violation. Thank you. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions? Mr. Friedman, have you received any comments or concerns from small businesses in this particular area?
We did, yes. The proposed boundaries for the clean zone extend into, up to Buddles Avenue, that area, and so that encompasses the Short North. Betsy Pandora from the Short North Alliance did reach out, addressing some of the concerns regarding the duration, the temporiness of this, the clean zone itself, and what that really means for businesses. And what that, what this clean zone really means is that if you're, if you're a restaurant or a vendor with a permit to operate as it is, nothing changes. This is only if you want to promote the NCAA, use any of their licensing, their trademarks, in conjunction with your business. And if you're going to do so, then you would need a clean zone permit.
Thank you so much, and thank you for all the work that you have put into this. And we also have Ally with us from the Columbus City Attorney's Office, who has worked diligently on this ordinance as well. So thank you both.
Thank you Councilmember.
If there are no further questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you Councilmember Page. Well, seeing no more business before this council, I'm going to ask for motion to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
All right, regular meeting number seven is adjourned. There we go. Regular meeting number eight will now come to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
We are calling to order the zoning committee, and Councilmember Priscilla Tyson is Chair. The floor is yours, Councilmember.
Thank you. Before beginning the zoning agenda, I will briefly explain the rules of council as pertaining to speaking before council on zonings and variances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents, three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes. And we provide, and will provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. On the advice of the, so for all those who are going to be speaking tonight, please, you can stand, raise your right hand. And just, I wish to tell the truth, and nothing but the truth, and please answer, I will.
I will.
Thank you. All right. The first zoning is 0254-2018, to rezone 4854 Wendler Boulevard, being 7.73 plus or minus acres located at the northwest corner of Wendler Boulevard and Stigler Road north, from PUD 8 Plan Unit Development District to LAR 12 Limited Apartment Residential District. The applicant is the Woda Group LLC. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and there is no area commission, no area commission, and no known opposition. I first move to amend to emergency, and I now move for passage. Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, and I now move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 0266-2018, to rezone 2110 IKEA Way, being 2.85 plus or minus acres located on the north side of IKEA Way, 1,000, 1,200 plus or minus feet west of East Powell Road from LC 4 Limited Commercial District to LC 4 Limited Commercial District. The applicant is NPFG LLC. The proposed use is a limited commercial development with updated height district. The City Department's recommendation is approval. The far north community's coalition's recommendation is approval. I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 0255-2018, to rezone 1558 North Wheatland Avenue, being 3.5 plus or minus acres located on the west side of North Wheatland Avenue, 1,200 feet, north, plus or minus feet north of West Broad Street, from NG Neighborhood General Development to LARLD Limited Apartment Residential District Rezoning. The applicant is the Woda Group LLC. Proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Greater Hilltop Area Commission's recommendation is disapproval. And I first will have, I don't know if Ms. Pine do want to make a presentation?
Good evening. The undeveloped site consists of 3.5 acres, zoned in the NG Neighborhood General District, which permits single-unit dwellings. The applicant requests the LARLD Limited Apartment Residential District to permit the development of a 39-unit apartment development and 12 townhouse units, for a total of 51 dwelling units, at a density of 14.57 units per acre. The site is within a residual tract of a larger former NG District, part of which was rezoned in 2012 to permit the development of a, of an adjacent senior housing facility, and the remainder is otherwise undeveloped and zoned NG. The proposed limitation text commits to a site plan and establishes appropriate landscaping, access, and building type restrictions in consideration of adjacent uses and lower-density residential uses to the west across North Wheatland Avenue. A concurrent council variance, ordinance 0256-2018, has been submitted to modify parking lot screening and perimeter yard requirements. The site lies within the boundaries of the Greater Hilltop Plan Amendment, which recommends residential uses at a density of 10 units per acre as the most appropriate land use. The plan also identifies the site as a development opportunity site for new housing. Although the proposed density exceeds the 10 units per acre that is recommended by the plan, staff supports the request noting the proposal's adjacency to the senior housing facility, a large-scale urban garden, and ample open space, varied building types, and because the overall density of these compatibles uses results in a density that is consistent with the plan's recommendation, therefore, staff's recommendation is for approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Pine. I now will ask for a presentation from the applicant.
Good evening, members of council.
Please state your name.
Joseph McCabe, the Woda Group.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, members of council here tonight, we have before you a proposal for rezoning and variance for Wheatland Crossing 2. Although there was a, a no vote from the Area Commission, which I'm sure will speak their own views this evening, the plan has changed. own views this evening, the plan has changed over time, and if we could go back today, and we could not, due to tight timing with the financing and tax credits we're seeking with the Ohio Housing Finance Agency, we actually feel it'd probably be a really different story. It would go from a 6-6 vote to probably a much larger majority in favor of the project. It was not just a clear, flat-out no from that local neighborhood group. The project originally had a different plan than what you saw in front of you tonight, and the plan, as you see now, which did receive full support from the Development Commission, and actually, a number of community stakeholders who maybe opposed this first, now actually do, I believe, wholeheartedly support, was a different plan. It had a 60-unit building sitting out along Wheatland Avenue. It had a much bigger scaled structure itself. It had larger density, a different configuration as a whole. When we went to the Neighborhood Civic Association, we took a lot of the comments and a lot of the feedback we heard during that 6-6 vote, and we put ourselves to work. We worked with our consultants and our engineers. We also then really sat down with the Westgate Neighbors. We sat down with the Greater Hilltop Neighbors. We sat down with members of the Civic. We sat down with members of the Business Association, and we said, how do we make this a better project, really? And we heard a lot about scale and density and contextual discussions, and then also the same thing happened at Development Commission. We had some hesitation during the December Development Commission, which that evening composed a number of architects and engineers with great design background experience, and we took their considerations into view. From that point, we moved forward to actually rework the plan, putting a series of townhomes, two-story townhomes out along Wheatland Avenue, pushing the three-story building in a much smaller density back, reducing the site as a whole, and really working to exploit one of our great partnerships here, as this project will work with both the Homes on the Hill CDC, as well as the Mid-Ohio Food Bank, as part of its co-ownership team, to really promote urban farm concepts around the property. You may know that they have a five-acre urban farm initiative directly to our south, and as part of this, we will do things like not only just advancing the opportunities of the virtues of building more affordable housing, which we all know we need desperately in this city, but also capitalizing on one of the secondary needs. When we talked with our partners at Mid-Ohio Food Bank, they said, you know, we feed people, but the second thing we hear quite often is they need a place to stay, need a place to live. So, working together with them, they're going to be taking care of all of the code-compliant landscaping, will all be produce-bearing, fruit-bearing, et cetera, to really emphasize part of the partnership. They'll be providing supportive services with us and the local CDC as part of this initiative, and really building something unique that you cannot find elsewhere in the city. So, really, this project has completely changed from the course of when it was first proposed to the project that you see here before you tonight, which I believe you will find that many of those that may have been at your offices or sending letters opposing it may have changed their mind here today, but I can't speak for them specifically. I will let them do that, and happy to respond to both questions you might have, as well as questions after they've made their remarks.
All right. Councilmember Stenziano.
Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to thank you for coming to the table. I know it was driven by the residents of the Harrison Wests and Greater Hilltop, but really wanted to thank your willingness to work with them, address their concerns. I know they helped change some of the plans. Highland West, not Harrison West, Mr. Phillips, I apologize. I'm seeing stares. But just really wanted to thank you again for that, and I'll compliment the neighbors for their willingness to come together and not just be a project that couldn't move forward, but really hear each other, sit around the table, and come with a proposal that we have an obligation on the city to help address as well. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Remy.
Thank you, Chair Tyson. Again, I want to echo my colleagues' support, and thank you for going to the table and working with the neighbors. I think that's very important, and it leads to a much easier decision. I did have a couple of questions. Is that fence I was out there today, and is that fence intended to come down once you've got this project underway, the large fence?
Currently, that fence is sitting right out at the street front. It's actually not even pushed back to the right-of-way line. It is currently land bank land, so it's technically a city fence.
Okay.
As you see today, that fence will completely go away in our process. In fact, I think that's one of the greatest attractions that you probably have right now, that kind of paints a really unfriendly image, and our goal is to really help be a catalyst in revitalization here, so indeed, one of the first things would be the fence to go away.
Sure. And are any of the wires going to be buried? I had heard somebody, somebody mentioned that to me. I'm not sure if you had any responsibility, or if you had proposed to do any of the wires along the Wheatland Avenue.
Well, a number of the lines, if they're power lines attributed to our project, we've already started to have all the new services brought in on the backside of the current phase one, so where possible, that will be achievable. If there are high-voltage lines or grid lines that could not be moved, or maybe not necessarily the power company's ownership, depending on easement, we're happy to work with the city in making that a reality.
Okay, thank you very much. I just wanted to get some clarification. Appreciate it.
Thank you, councilmember. And now, I will have their speakers for, speakers on this legislation, and there are three speakers who are speaking in support of the legislation, and these are speakers that, as our speaker just mentioned, that they've been working within the community because of what happened at some of the initial meetings, and so now we have speakers that are saying that they support the project. And so, the first speaker will be, I came up first, Mr. Jeffrey Phillips, who is from the Highland West Civic Association. Good evening.
Good evening.
Please state your name and who you represent.
Jeffrey Phillips, president of the Highland West Civic Association. President Harden, Chairwoman Tyson, council members and city staff, we are here this evening in support of ordinances 0255-0218 and 0255-0218, although it's conditional due to our concerns with safety and traffic and the configuration of North Wheatland Avenue, as shown in the handouts we have just given you. Wheatland Avenue is a very narrow street, only 22 feet across at its widest parts. It is a dangerous jogged intersection with no traffic light at West Broad, where a two-way Wheatland on the north side of Broad joins an offset one-way southbound Wheatland to the south of it. The street's traffic pattern is confusing at best. It begins as a two-way from Broad to the Health Center's first entrance, becomes a northbound one-way street for the next three blocks, only to then become a two-way street again at Steel Avenue. At the end of it, there is a dangerous blind hill just past the senior housing entrance, and a sharp curve to the left at the bottom of it, as it becomes Glenview Boulevard. Also, because of the alleys are very dark at night and perceived unsafe, residents use the west side of Wheatland for their primary parking, causing additional concerns because the street is also a main northbound fire lane used for all calls off Steel Avenue on the north side of Broad. Emergency vehicles already have problems and struggle with the narrow street and the parked cars, as do snowplows and refuse trucks. And in the midst of all of this, Wheatland Avenue is a very well-used bicycle boulevard. The street is not well-designed for the needs of today, and certainly will not be able to support the 200-plus new residents that this new complex will bring. So, we are asking the city for changes that could be made immediately to remediate some of these issues. For example, make Wheatland a two-way street from West Broad to Glenview, and move the traffic light from Oakley to Wheatland to create a safer traffic flow for drivers and cyclists alike. This would also help alleviate current safety issues created by the traffic of an overused health facility that already needs additional parking, along with the needs of the current senior housing complex, the Mid-Ohio Food Garden traffic, the bicycle traffic, and the yet-to-be construction traffic for this new project. Also, signs warning of the two-way tight curve at the Glenview-Wheatland Avenue intersection, and warning of the blind hill. They need to be installed, and if the street cannot be made into a two-way, we need additional signage directing people to West Broad Street to avoid wrong-way drivers. And finally, to ease street parking issues, upgrades in the alley west of Wheatland need to be made to accommodate well-lit off-street parking. But, the only real solution in the long term to all of this is that North Wheatland Avenue needs to be widened. This has been discussed in two community meetings, and the developers' plans have included more than enough setback to accommodate the widening. So, we ask that the city of Columbus begin to drop the specs and to cost out such a project as soon as possible, so it can be submitted as part of the 2019 city budget. With our concerns about the safety issues and traffic on Wheatland being voiced, the Highland West Civic Association is giving our full support of this project. We thank Westgate Neighbors and our partners for joining with us in this, and we also thank the Woda Company, Mr. McCabe, and Mr. Perry for sitting down with the community and working with us, because something really positive's come about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Our next speaker is going to be Rachel Upton. Please state your name and who you represent.
Thank you. My name's Rachel Upton. I am a resident on North Wheatland. I live at 177 North Wheatland Avenue. It's the corner of Wheatland and Steel, so it's right where this proposed development is going. And I just want to attest for, first of all, thank you, councilmember, for coming out and speaking with me today and looking at the neighborhood. And just to attest to the traffic concerns that we already have, I did send a video from, taken from my camera, surveillance camera on my house, showing a semi-truck that comes down and ended up going the wrong way down the one-way street there. It couldn't make the turn. Even if it was able to, it would have taken out probably my steps or my hand railing to my car. And you can see the ruts in front of my house and on the side of my property from where trucks, they just can't make the turn, with it being a fire lane, too, for our city services. I'm really appreciative that I get plowed, so it's great. But the plows can't, they can't fit either, and they have a hard time, and when they do come down, they kind of trap in all the cars and ice them all down the way, because they can't make the turn, and they can't get down the street as well. So, please just consider our traffic concerns. I know in the report from the commission, every single commissioner noted that traffic needed to be identified. I'm not sure why our city planning department said that it wasn't needed, but it very well needs to be looked at. They didn't even look at it, so there was no comment, but every one of those commissioners did, so thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Michael Blake.
Hello, my name is Michael Blake, and I am the treasurer of the Westgate Neighbors Association. Some have asked why the Westgate Neighbors Association was active in opposing the original plan. Highland West is our close neighbor, and it's important to recognize that for the Hilltop to once again become a thriving community, we must all work together. This being one of the last and likely largest infill sites on the Hilltop, we simply could not settle for plopping a three-story monolithic wall on a historic residential street. We now have highlighted the importance of everyone using the, oh. We have now highlighted the importance of everyone using the 2010 Greater Hilltop Plan in reviewing all projects, not simply for density levels, but for design principles. We have connected several neighborhood groups in advance of the new Hilltop Master Plan, and shown all that, by working together, we become stronger. We want to commend and thank the Woda Group for listening to the concerns of both the community and this commission. They worked with Mid-Ohio to put in elements that will knit well with the expanded Mid-Ohio Food Bank urban farm. The Hilltop is currently a food desert, with the nearest full-service grocery store being 2.5 miles away from this site. The proposed urban farm will help bring fresh produce to an underserved area. The Hilltop is not without its struggles, and it will take all of us working together with city leaders to address some of the concerns around safety forces, city services, and resist any plan that would further concentrate low-income housing into any area of the city. According to a Pew Institute study, Columbus Metro is second only to Austin in economic segregation. While we applaud the recently announced changes in the way incentives will be given for new affordable housing, we still believe that low-income housing is being concentrated in already fragile areas. We urge the city leaders, Morpsey, and developers to come to the table to look at what metro areas at the bottom of this list, that's in your packet, have done to create true mixed-income cities, giving everyone the opportunity for success. So, with that said, the Westgate Neighbors Association joins our neighbors to the east in giving conditional support for this project, conditional support only as long as the city of Columbus agrees to widen North Wheatland Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blake, for coming down, and before we have any other comments, we have the representative from the Greater Hilltop Area Commission, the chairman, Jay McAllister. The floor is yours, sir.
My microphone is not working, so I'll come to you. President Harden, President Pro Tem Stenziano, Chairwoman Tyson, thank you for allowing me to speak, members of council. The area surrounding 158 North Wheatland has been in need of help for a very long time, especially the nearby West Broad Street corridor. The Greater Hilltop Area Commission has been begging for investors to come and help to revitalize that area, redevelop it. On December 5, 2017, the applicant came before the Greater Hilltop Area Commission, seeking a vote of recommendation for this project. Unfortunately, the vote after reviewing the plans was to not recommend it. But that's not the end of the story. With much input from the community and neighborhood organizations, the developer went completely back to the drawing board, literally to the drawing board, and redesigned the project 100%. Unfortunately, they did not come back before the Greater Hilltop Area Commission for a second vote. So, on paper, the original vote not to recommend it must stand. However, I would like to point out to you, and that's why I'm here tonight, that the plans that you are viewing and the proposed development that you are talking about tonight are not what we voted on. In other words, we voted on apples, you're voting on oranges. I felt it was important that you hear that from the commission itself. We urge you to consider these proposed development plans on your own, and decide what you believe is best for the Hilltop, and to vote in that way. On a separate matter, I should say, speaking separately, not as my role as chairman of the Greater Hilltop Area Commission, but as a private citizen, I would strongly urge you to recommend this proposed development. I think it would be a great asset to the community, and I personally am strongly in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McAllister. I want to thank all the community leaders who have come down and have spoken in favor of this legislation tonight. It's, I really appreciate what you do in the community, so thank you. And I don't know if my colleagues have any questions before I ask the applicant to come and address any of these issues. Councilmember Remy.
I just wanted to say, in response to Mr. Phillips and Ms. Upton, I have listened to your concerns. I've asked Director Gallagher to start taking a look at that, if, for no other reason, to look at some short-term solutions to try to provide some relief along North Wheatland Avenue, so just want to point that out.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Stenziano.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Also want to thank Mr. Blake for all three of your advocacy. I know you're here representing many voices that had concerns, both through the Area Commission process, and then, again, your championing and sitting down with Woda, to provide something that's great for the neighborhood, but also to ask us to do more on the city's end as well. So, thank you for your support tonight and throughout this entire process.
Thank you. I know, Mr. McCabe, or do you want to make any other comments, or? In response.
I think generally, what you heard tonight was a general sort of consensus of support. Yes, indeed, following up on Mr. McAllister's point, that what you have today is sort of apples, but they're the good apples or the best apples, rather than the oranges. But we're kind of glad the oranges went away, because we feel like it made us a better developer. It'll mean a more meaningful project, more impactful project for this community, specifically that'll be a win for everybody involved. If we did not have the time constraint in seeking your approval this evening with waiver the 30-day requirement, really, we'd love to go back and get a vote as well. Just pressed for time here on this, but thank you, and hopefully, you'll see the merit of what we've done here, with really working with the community to make a better project.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Mitchell Brown.
Chair, President Tyson, I have a question in terms of the responsibility for widening of the street. Who does that reside with? Is that the city, or is that going to be the developer? Who's going to actually take on responsibility of making that happen?
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. As you've heard tonight, Councilmember Remy has just said that he, it would fall on the city. And what they have done is made sure there was enough of a setback. Should they, should, what the WOTA company has done is should the street be widened, they have made sure there was a setback so that if we were to widen the street, that there is appropriate space to be able to do that. And so I know that, I don't know if Mr. Dan Blickschmidt wants to make any comments about, no? Okay, well, Councilmember Remy is going to be working on this with us, which is important because, again, what the community leaders have just communicated to us based upon the documentation that they have shown, certainly to take the lead to see if there is a way that this could be, you know, part of a capital improvement. So that's who take, we take the responsibility for doing that. I know that the one gentleman said that he gave conditional approval based on if we were to be able to do that. Certainly, we can't as a body say that we're going to do that. But what you have heard is a commitment from Councilmember Remy, he's already had those conversations, that he understands the importance of this and clearly what has been written by the Development Commission is the importance of we have to address those traffic concerns, that we certainly take that information. We don't take this lightly. We take this to say, okay, what do we need to do in talking to the administration? And that's what asks Councilmember Remy's committee. And certainly, I think that hopefully he will be working on this and report back to this body. So any other questions or comments? Again, I just appreciate, you know, WOTA's work in the community around affordable housing. As you know, this is with our Councilmember Page, as well as this entire council, is certainly committed to making sure that we have more affordable housing and workforce housing in this community. And I also want to thank you for, I know it has some time constraints, but you couldn't go back, but I really do appreciate you working with these community leaders and them coming down to council and sharing your comments with this body because that does mean something. It does mean something to us. And this project is an exciting project for the individuals. I know senior housing is already there, affordable housing, that there's a health center right on the corner of, you know, Broad and Wheatland, so individuals will be able to have an opportunity to utilize Primary One. We have appreciated the commitment, working with Homes on the Hill. But for someone like myself who's focused on a food plan and making sure we have, that our residents have access to healthy, affordable food in our community, having the partnership with the Mid-Ohio Food Bank is critical. And so I appreciate that other, that extra effort that we are so focused on in terms of individuals having a healthy, affordable food and having this five-acre urban garden. And if there are no questions or comments, I am going to, one, move for passage to amend to emergency.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. The component legislation is 0256-2018. It is to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3312.21D landscaping and 3333.255 perimeter yard of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 158 North Wheatland Avenue to permit a multi-unit residential development with reduced development standards in the L.A.R.L.D. Limited Apartment Residential District. The applicant is WOTA Group LLC. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The C Department's recommendation is approval, and the Greater Hilltop Area Commission's recommendation is a disapproval. And I don't know, Mr. McAllister, are there any more comments you want to make on this? Ditto. Everything, all right. And so I move to amend to emergency.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Now move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
All right. Council President Harden?
Thank you, Chair Tyson. Next ordinance we have is 0208-2018 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.037, R2F Residential District, 3312.21A landscaping and screening, 3312.49 minimum numbers of parking spaces required, 3332.14 R2F area district requirements, and 3332.21D building lines of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 7978 North Seventeenth Street to permit a 30-unit apartment building with reduced development standards in the R2F Residential District and to repeal ordinance number 1325-96 passed on June 24, 1996. The applicant is Mark Lemire. The proposed use is multi-unit residential development. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the Near East Area Commission's recommendation is approval. First, I'm going to ask to remove from the table, can I get a motion? Clerk Colerole?
Ms. Brown?
By voice, sorry.
Mr. Brown? Page? Remy? Stenziano? Tyson?
Stay.
President Harden?
Yes, removed from the table. And again, would, staff, would you please give a presentation on this ordinance for us, please?
Absolutely.
Ms. Pine?
The site, it consists of 10 separate parcels that are currently zoned R2F Residential District and developed with a private charitable club as permitted by CV 96-010. The applicant proposes to redevelop the site with a 30-unit apartment building. A council variance is necessary because the R2F District only permits one or two-unit residential units. The, and included in this request is a parking space reduction from 45 spaces to 10 spaces, mainly due to the fact that the residents of this building will not use cars. The site is within the boundaries of the Near East Area Plan, which recommends high-density residential mixed-use developments at this location. The proposal is consistent with the plan's recommendation and is compatible with the development pattern of the area, more specifically, the Scholar House development that's located directly across Seventeenth Street. Therefore, staff's recommendation is for approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pine. Are there representatives from the applicant here this evening? Would you like to please come and give a presentation on this? Welcome back to council. If you could, again, please state your name and address, any organization you represent.
Yes, good evening. My name is Janita Brongers, and I represent Moody Nolan Architects. So, thank you for this opportunity to come back. We were here last week, and we presented the project. Just to kind of refresh your memory, this is a project, it's a 30-unit residential development for emancipated foster youth. We're looking to develop a two-story building that is consistent with the character of the neighborhood. This is kind of the view of the building. We're using compatible materials, materials and very similar character related to the building that is across the street. We have developed a courtyard, so if you look at this view, you can see there's a residential house located in this area. We have developed a really nice green courtyard that would be an amenity for the residents. There is a 35-foot separation from there. There were many questions that were asked of the residents, the Mr. and Mrs. Finch. So throughout this week, we have worked with them to answer many questions they have about the proposed development. One of the questions was related to the fencing and the separation. They had concerns about, you know, kids going into their property, and we have secured or talked about providing an ornamental fence that will secure and separate the parcel. We are providing a lighted parking, surface parking. It will be illuminated for security. And the lighting that is proposed actually has cut off, so there won't be any light pollution going to the parcel next door. We will have trees, landscape, really nice amenities that will really be an asset for the community. In addition to that, we have a marquee piece, which is an area multipurpose room for the students, for the kids that will live here. And actually, this population will be kids that will go to college. So these are students and foster youth that have Excel and have, you know, they're really very well on their way to go to school and really be, you know, contributing members of the community. With that, I'm going to let Mike Wagner with CMHA address you.
Good evening, President and council. I think Janita's pretty much covered most of it. CMHA is very excited about this project. I mean, we have over 3,000 supportive units in the city right now. I think we've got a great reputation for keeping those properties up. I think we have a great reputation as being a good neighbor. And yeah, that's, you did a great job. You've pretty much covered it, so.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
And next I'm going to ask, you can, it's just up to the side, and I'm going to ask for Ms. Tanja Finch, who is here, to come back, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, members of council. My name is Tanja Finch, and our family home of 45 years is located in a community zoned for one- and two-family homes. We have a quality of life here that's based on the city codes that were decided years ago based on reasonable standards. We have seen variances approved for two apartment buildings in our neighborhood, the Scholar House and the Charles Project. Now we have a third potential building on the horizon being developed by CMH. This one is for young adults aging out of foster care to be built directly adjacent to our home. This project is most troubling because it is not a good fit for the neighborhood. I have, we have an issue with the basketball court, which I'll be glad to answer a question, but due to my limited time, I can't. And with small children in our home, we have concerns about having 30, 18- to 21-year-olds aging out of foster care as our next-door neighbors. Most will be unemployed, many have troubled backgrounds and brushes with the law. Some will be disabled or emotionally unstable. That I was told by Mr. Brown. The nature of the facility indicates that there will be a steady transition of young folk in and out, depending on their personal successes or failures with the program. These tenants will be living on their own for the first time in their life and have no concept or understanding of adulthood or real independence. They have not been prepared for this newfound independence nor taught any survival skills. Also, the units are going to be exceptionally small. Can't really elaborate on that due to time constraints. Had we known four years ago that our neighborhood was changing to low-income housing, we would not have made substantial investments for our home. Variances are being requested and given too often. They should be rare. They are changing the landscape of our neighborhood. This is so disheartening and makes homeowners like us feel hopeless. In summary, let me be clear. We are not against growth or the city partnering with third-party organizations to provide homes for those in need. However, this particular project, in our opinion, will have a severe negative impact on our livelihood, our peace of mind, our property value, and quality of life in the neighborhood. Open your eyes and your minds. Putting all these kids or young adults in one building will be like putting a frat house in a community. With their limited resources and minimal supervision, these kids can be out of control, and there will be an increase in crime immediately. We've already seen that with the Scholar House across the street. My concerns for the safety of this community, if this project moves forward, are huge. Mixing this type of housing in the residential community of elderly and families with small children is a huge risk. It is a recipe for disaster. If my expressed concerns are not enough to stop this project, please enforce the existing city codes and ordinance and deny all five requests for variances. In the event that council bleeds the project's merits, overwhelms our personal concerns, and these variances are granted, we are prepared to appeal in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 2506. In listening to some of the other presentations, I wish I could say that this is great for our neighborhood. I haven't even heard them say it's great for our neighborhood. So, you know, I just think it needs to be put someplace else.
Are there any questions for Ms. Finch? President Pro Tem Stenziano?
Thank you, President Harden. Could you elaborate on the basketball court and the side since you didn't feel there was enough time?
The basketball court is located right, it butts up to our backyard. We, I've had a basketball court in my home in Atlanta, and it was fine when my kids were small because I could look out the window and control the activity. If the kids swore, I'd give them a technical and tell them to go. But what happened is people started coming over, uninvited, who we don't know, and they started playing on that court. We had to call the police to get them out. We're talking about kids aging out of foster care. They're not adults. They're going to have friends there. I can hear my grandchildren in the backyard listening to vulgarity or whatever else these 18-year-olds. I was never told that these kids would be under the same process as the Scholar House. The Scholar House is single parents with children, and they are on a career path. They are or have to be in school. None of this was told to us about these foster cares. They've aged out. So I'm not aware of any special program that they have to be in in order to be eligible for this housing. It just looks like they're just fortunately giving them someplace to stay. Statistics have shown that there's not enough data really to gauge whether these type homes work. And to put them in an area where the city is trying to revitalize, I just, I mean, it's risky. It's risky. It's a huge risk.
Could you speak, CMHA, could you guys speak to the programming that's involved around this project?
Actually, Councilmember, I'm going to have CMHA come back and rebut after. Oh, I'm sure. Any more questions for Ms. Finch? Councilmember Page?
Thank you so much for coming down again. And just so I'm clear on your concerns with the, could you talk about more about the variances versus the use and who will occupy it? So what are your concerns with the variances versus the individuals who will be in the building?
Well, the variances, is my understanding, in the back and on the, in the back, the basketball court looks like it's like right butting up against our property. I think that was the one that was five feet or so. The side, they said that there's going to be green space. We didn't see that on the diagram that we got from council's website. I did see it on the one that was provided to me by Mr. Brown. When I asked about the fence, I asked, how tall is this fence going to be? And he said that it would be, he said he didn't know. He said somewhere between four feet or so. So for me, it needs to be a high fence so that it's, you know, that we're definitely much kids are secure. As far as the lighting, I'm not sure how much lighting it's going to be, where it's going to be at, if it's even going to be on the basketball court or in the backyard, if it's going to be on the parking decks, which he said there's only 10, there's only 10 spaces. In my mind, how can you say these kids are not going to have cars? And if they don't have cars, certainly they'll have friends with cars. So 10 spaces still would not be adequate.
Thank you, Ms. Finch. We have a speaker speaking in support who's also from the Near East Area Commission, Ms. Annie Womack. Would you please come down, give your name, address, and any organization that you may represent? represent?
Good evening, President Harden, councilmembers, staff. Well, we have to separate some things. We're here to talk about zoning. The commission speaks on the zoning of particular project, and the uses and what we're doing. This was a three-phase project, beginning with the Scholar House, transitioning to this third phase. So, when this project was presented, it was presented after the third phase of something that was already existing. So, the zonings go along with the project. So, the use, as it was explained to our commission, is that these are kids that are transitioning out of foster care, and they get 10 spaces. And some of those spaces are for live-in staff, and I don't think that has been mentioned, but there should be live-in staff at this facility, so that the students are not, they're not unmonitored, so they won't be running rampant. I also do know that, being a former group homeowner myself, we had seven projects. Visitation is limited by our standards, and I'm pretty sure that they should have the same standards for group homes. So, there is no live-in, there is no move-in. These are small units, these are studio cubicles, as I call them, because they're really small. So, we felt that with the zoning, and with the existing use of what's there, and I have an office around the corner at 823.5 East Long Street, and I have not had any complaints from the business owners or any other residents about the Scholar House program, or crime, or I would have stated that at the site visit. So, if you have any questions on that, I can pretty answer those.
Thank you, Ms. Womack. Now, I would like to invite CMHA to come back and speak to some of what we heard.
Robert Bitsonhofer with CMHA, and also I don't know if we're out of our allotted speakers, but we also have another member of the team here who'd like to speak. So, to kind of talk about some of the things we've heard, so this is a, the third phase of our Scholar House model for CMHA. First two phases are across the street. This phase will also be managed by the same property management company that we've used at Scholar House, Phase One and Two, Community Properties of Ohio. Our other service provider that will be part of this project is the Ohio Association of Child Caring Agencies. They will help with finding folks to live here, providing services to the transition-age youth, once they're in the, in the property. There'll also be two staff who live at the property full-time, kind of like, something like an RA model, they'll have their own units on the, on each floor, one on each floor. And so, so this model builds off of what we've learned from the first two phases of Scholar House. You know, over those first two phases, there's 38 units over there. We've had, I think, maybe one family leave the program, not voluntarily, from either their grade slipping or whatever it was. So, we're looking to imply the same lessons we've learned over there to this new type of population. As Mike said a little bit before, you know, we have done this type of housing for difficult-to-house populations around the city. We think it's worked fairly well in other places around the city. This is a type of population we care deeply about, and we think this is a great opportunity here. And if you have any question, if you don't have any more questions for me, one of the other members of our team is actually a former foster youth, who would like to say a few words as well.
Councilmembers, do, does anybody have any questions for Councilmember Stenziano, or Remi?
I just wanted to, I don't see where the basketball court was, so I was just trying to figure that out real quick. All of that, okay. Okay, thank you. That's.
My name is DeShana Kante, and I'm a former foster youth. I'm also an employee of CMHA, I'm also the header of this project. I will be housing the tenants. It breaks my heart to hear the lady speak of foster use, like, we're nothing. I was a foster youth, and I've worked since I was 14 and a half. I came to Columbus from Cleveland, and I had nothing or no one. And through the system and the programs that they provided me, I have worked ever since then. I've worked for CMHA for 15 years. Before then, I worked for another company for 10 years. Excuse me. We are productive citizens in this community. I volunteer at the food pantry for Faith Community Church. I also volunteer for Toys for Tots every year. We are pillars in this community. We are not here to damage the community. If you give a person a home, you give them hope. I was a person who aged out of the program, and if I had had a home, a roof over my head and didn't have to work, I would have been able to get my education, to obtain it, and to go further in my career than what I have. I could be sitting next to one of you. But without that, it's hard for us to get out here and become productive citizens. So, then our minds start to wander without it. And this project will give a person a home, they would give a person a hope, they would give a person a chance to have education, they would give us a chance to live and survive and be pillars in a community like other people. Please don't take that from us. It is so hard for youth out here today, and we are lost, and no one understands that. And if you can give us a chance to build this project, we will make it work, and we will make these foster youths do what they're supposed to do. We have yet to have a failed project. Please don't take this away from us.
Thank you, and thank, thank you for sharing your story, and for the work that you're So, last week I tabled this piece of legislation, because there was a request for more outreach. I believe that that outreach has been done. I believe that the programming that has been shown through the first two phases of Scholar House proved to, are enough for us to move forward with a third phase. So, with that, I am going to move for passage by voice. Our clerk, Colerole, by voice.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown? Page? Remi? Stenziano? Tyson?
I'm staying.
President Harden?
Yes, ordinance passed. That is all that we have in our zoning committee this evening. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Certainly.
Clerk Colerole, please.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remi, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Stand adjourned. Thank you.